Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole. We have three items on the agenda tonight. First one is AdSposure. Mr. Gabbard?
Sure. Tonight with us, we have Ken Black from AdSposure to talk to us about some digital signs, both digital and static, that we could potentially get for free and then eventually do some shared costs with. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ken to give us a little presentation.
Sure. All right. Good evening. So just to start, make sure you're aware of who we are. The company name is Advertising Vehicles. AdSposure is one of the divisions of Advertising Vehicles. We're in Blue Ash. We operate transit systems. We do the bus advertising in places like Cincinnati, Northern Kentucky, Lexington, Nashville, Kansas City, Des Moines, Fort Worth, San Antonio, and most recently, Chicago. So we will take benches, shelters, buses, basically take those out to the public, find retailers, services that want to advertise on them, and then share revenue back in with the transit authorities. We do the work with the streetcar downtown. The signs that Gabby's talking about are actually signs that were supposed to go in for the streetcar that are actually sitting in my warehouse in Blue Ash that make them an opportunity for us to use here in Norwood. So the opportunity is basically to take these digital signs, find convenient places that we'd like to put them, and that would be a kind of a joint thing between the two parties to figure out where we want to put them for your use and for our use, your use being for PSA purposes, stuff like COVID safety, for example, or other things that might pop up through the next 10 years. And then we'll utilize those for putting advertisements on them, sharing the revenue once the expenses for these are paid for. So if you'll kind of move through here, I'm on a page that says, "City of Norwood Bus Stops." There's a lot of bus stops that are currently in Norwood. We recently got a contract with Sorda where we'll be actually replacing some of the shelters that are actually in Norwood at no cost to Norwood, putting those shelters in place. They'll be advertising supporting as well. Some benches will go up into all of Cincinnati, including Norwood, for amenities for the riders to go. So just to let you know that those are things that we're going to be working with your city with in the near term anyhow. If you'll skip a couple pages, it's tough to lick your fingers when you've got a mask on. I think that's part of the point. So if you look at the City of Norwood digital signage, it kind of gives you a picture of what you might be doing, more just kind of a vinyl printed sign, and now you can turn it into something that can be put out there for PSA purposes, designed. We've got a design staff. You guys probably have some graphic artists on your team. Those things can be put onto our server and then immediately put into place with a scheduling software that you guys would have access to use. So I think that's part of the communication part from a PSA perspective, from your guys' point. The next picture shows, just to give you some clarity on what these things look like, Michigan Avenue in Chicago, that's an actual 75-inch display, slightly different than the one we're going to do. Ours has a pedestal at the bottom, so you know, this one's open. The one that we'll have has a metal surface at the bottom where it's, that's where the electronics sit. But that is the actual size of the unit. That's a 75-inch display. It's actually the exact same screen that we've got in our warehouse. Couple more pictures for you to see. The one where the gentleman's utilizing the touchscreen, these are touchscreen capable. They can be turned on or off. So at places where we might have them on sidewalks where we want to actually make them touchscreen sensitive to say, "Hey, show me some shopping around here," or "some bars and restaurants around here," you can do that and actually have some interaction with the screen if you choose. That screen here that you're looking at is actually a 55-inch screen, so it's a little bit smaller than the one that we intend to put in Norwood if you guys would like to do it. You've got some extra information here that I've put in here. It's nothing we need to go over today. It talks about the brightness and some of the specs of the screens. At some point in time, someone from Norwood may want some of those answers, and I wanted to provide those with you on this presentation. There's specs for it as well. Talks about the height, the width. Obviously, you guys have some regulations in place to monitor those, so you've got all the specifics of exactly what these things will look like. On the specs sheet, that's actually a screen that's in the Disney Park. That's the exact same screen that we intend to put in here, so you can kind of see how it looks and the size of it. These are double-sided digital displays. Both sides can carry advertisements. Both sides have touch displays on them as well. So you're looking at about 101 inches high by 45 inches wide and 11 inches deep is how these things work. And we've kind of gone through and looked at different locations that might work already, and we've done that with a few people, including Gabby, kind of looking at them strategically where we've got high traffic, high concentrations of eyeballs. That'll be important. And obviously, have enough space to put these things to create enough right-of-way ADA concerns, et cetera. So we'd have to work with your guys' team to make sure that we go, "Hey, these look good on a map. Now let's go out there. Let's look at them. Let's walk them. Let's measure them. Let's make sure that they work for an installation." Utilities, we've got to figure out where to plug into utilities. So there will be a lot of dialogue that would go on with somebody from your department later if we agree to put this in place. Now, to get down to the math, which is the fun part of this program, AdSposure would pay for 100% of the cost of these signs. Those are $893,000 of them for the digital signs to be installed. The nine static signs that we have, and the static signs are basically, they're non-digital. They're basically like a bus shelter ad that's backlit by solar panel. So it's about the same size. We see a bus shelter ad, it's basically the same size as that. They're standalone units, just like these digital kiosks are. So we've got nine of each. The digital ones, of course, there's two screens on each, so there's 18 screens plus then the nine that are double-sided as well for the other units. So all told, we've got about $1 million in investment in these things. We pay for all of that. We pay for all the installation. And what we would want to do would be to share revenue with you guys 50/50 after we've recovered our cost. So how we've put together a pro forma on this, it looks like by year three, we'd be at the point where we have recovered our cost. We're looking for a 10-year engagement on these, about a 10-year lifecycle on these signs themselves. So eight years that we'd be splitting revenue. We've even on year three, put together a guarantee payment, so if we're somehow wrong in our math, you guys would get $42,500 a check as a guarantee payment to you, starting year three and beyond. And then, once the revenue goes over top of that, you'd get another check at the end of the year to settle up what we would owe you for additional revenue on the 50/50 split after net expenses are paid. Give you a feel for what that means, we expect to bring in about $552,000 of annual net profit on this, which you guys would share 50/50 with us by year three. So the assumptions that make that work, we've got nine double-sided 75-inch screens going in, that's 18 screens each. We've got nine double-sided static solar backlit displays going in. The total installed cost for both of these, as I said, is about $1 million, $976,000. The digital ads themselves will rotate a total of eight advertisers in a loop through theirs, selling on average at $600 per advertiser per month. The static inventory will be sold at about $300 per side. Some sides might get $500. Some sides might get 200, but we'll average that out to about 300 per side, depending upon how traffic flow and visibility works for the advertiser. We plan on selling about 65% of our inventory, so this isn't max capacity. If we were able to sell up higher, the revenue totals go up, and so does your share of the net profit at the end of the year. So based on this, AdSposure would be selling approximately $716,000 in yearly revenue after expenses and whatnot, again, $512,000, $261,000 per side. We'd be looking for a 10-year engagement, and basically after we reach, come together with an agreement, sign a contract, we'd have about two months before we'd start seeing these things going up in the ground. I did put a bunch of slides together, put them four to a page in the back, just of possible locations we've already looked at. We saved that for another discussion. Those are flexible. The goal is, of course, high traffic, high density, lots of eyeballs. That's what's going to turn the revenue, which of course is the benefit to both of us. That's really all I've got. If there's questions, be happy to have a kind of a back-and-forth dialogue on this to make sure that I've covered what is necessary.
I had a super quick question.
Yes, sir.
Like with Chicago, I saw that you guys work with that city.
We work with that city. That is not one of our displays. That's actually J.C. Deco.
In any of the other cities that you work with, do they ever kind of either check calculations, or do you give them kind of a quarterly update of the check that they're going to get? How would they, are they a part of that calculation?
Okay, perfect. Good question. So there's two things. We send in monthly reports, so whatever their accounting department is, we send in monthly reports. It shows what advertisers are on, copies of contracts, how much money those people are paying. So it shows total revenue, split of revenue coming down, so there'd be a full reconciliation that would be available to you that we'd mail out. We also have a platform on the back of our website. It's a media care center for our transit authorities to log into, so you'd have a login that would allow you to see all of that data that we would mail to the accounting department. It even shows additional information in regards to inventory, who's being sold, so you can kind of really understand what's going on. There's information in there. For example, when a rep puts an order into our system, you would see it the moment I see it. It's live information, live data sharing.
That's you, sir. Thank you.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Sure. Thank you. So you'd said that the picture displaying the sign and the City of Norwood digital signage, you said it was open. Okay, the one here on the street, Michigan Avenue, is open on the bottom, and you said the ones you're going to install are, have a metal base?
That's correct.
Is it the very next page there with the guy?
Yeah, if you go, there's one, it says Disney. It's actually in the Disney Park. It says specs for SmartLink 75-inch.
Okay, okay.
That's what it would look like.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I know it takes a couple months to get started after we sign a contract. Is this something that if we enter an agreement tomorrow, you would start the clock, or are you kind of wait? Is there a time before you're ready to actually get to work?
No, you know, we'd start it right away. I mean, I think the thing that'll cost us the most time is going back and forth with the city to really go, "Okay, hey, we like this area. Now exactly where is this thing going to sit?" So I think that'll take a little bit of time going back and forth to figure that out. One thing, and I did have a slide on this, so kind of segues into what you just said, we need to come up with an advertising policy. And I've got all kinds of examples of them for different municipalities and transit authorities we work with. We've got to decide what we're willing to put on the screens and what we're not willing to put on the screens. So I think that's a real simple conversation, but another thing that we need to have some dialogue about, are we going to take political advertising? Well, if you're going to take politically, you've got to take both sides. You can't choose. You're going to take issue advertising. If you're going to take issue advertising, you've got to, you can't, you can't pick and choose. So we've got to be real specific to make sure we don't get into any constitutional issues with the copy that we put on there. So we've got all kinds of advertising policies that work for us and work for the transit authorities that we represent in different countries or different states. So we'd be happy to share those and start the conversation from there. But we'd be ready to get going right away, but there is a process, getting the vendors, finding electricity, getting the construction, all that stuff in place. Usually, the manufacturing of these units takes several months, four to five months in some cases. We've already got them. They're sitting, ready to go. So we should be able to snap to it pretty quick.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Looking at your list here, you've got a ton of major cities, and major, I mean huge cities. Is there any, are there any cities similar in size to Norwood that have these things?
Yes. So let me make it real clear. Our company, what we tend to do is to work with the transit authorities, okay? With the transit authorities, we're putting ads on buses. We're putting ads on bus benches and bus shelters. The digital components of what we have here was supposed to go in place for the streetcar here in Cincinnati. You guys know what a political mess that is downtown. So that never happened. So these signs were purchased for that, and then somebody decided to change their mind after we'd already spent almost $1 million. So that's why they're here. So I don't have digital signs in other places. I've got all kinds of examples of other assets that we do convert into revenue. This is just a different way of doing it.
Mr. Rinn?
But you will find these things in lots of municipalities. Just, I have not installed them and sold them myself, but this will be an easy thing to sell. Yes, sir.
I'm curious if, have you, is this your first step, or have you met with the building department yet, and have they, have you had a meeting with them? What type of input do they have? Or I'm curious.
Yeah, I mean, I'll let Gabby speak a little bit to this, but we've had several conversations with different people, from legal to building to permitting. It seems like they're pretty well on board with the concept of this, and some people seem very excited about this, like, "Hey, this is what, you know, Norwood needs something like this. This would be a sexy thing for Norwood." And certainly, the revenue is something that can be very useful as well. So all of the interactions I've had have been very positive and, you know, like I said, almost excited to have these. Gabby, you can speak a little bit more, as you've been involved in some of those conversations, to who exactly has been there and any conversations maybe I've not been part of.
We had Zoom meeting with Tom Perry from the administration. Keith Moore, I believe, was on there from the Law Department. I'm not sure about the building department, so I mean, obviously, we would have to touch base with them. That's actually who he would probably work the closest with would probably be the building department after, you know, the administration kind of signs off on it and gives their okay. I would think that the building department would be who he would work with as far as the logistics, especially when we get down to locations and how that plays out and where they need to be and all that kind of stuff.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes, sir.
So essentially, you guys put up the money upfront. We pay it off after, what I'm looking at is maybe a year and a half?
Yeah, we're looking at almost two years, and you guys will start getting checks. I think it's the 23rd and 24th month, there would be a small check that would come in those months.
So then, who owns the sign after it's paid, paid off by the city?
I think that-
Is it the city, or is it still you guys?
Yeah, I mean, I think that can be worked out however we want. It's probably going to be something that you're going to want us to own them, is we're going to be the ones that are going to maintain them.
I get that, but you know, if we come down six, seven years from now and want to take, you know, don't want to do this anymore, and you guys take those signs and sell them somewhere else, that's, that's money for you guys and us losing out on that, even though we paid off the million-dollar, the million-dollar funding opportunity for these.
You paid it off with the work that we did in selling advertising. At the same time, I can understand there's some hoops that we want to go through, selling these things six, seven years from now. Try to sell a six- or seven-year-old iPhone and see what you get. It'll be the same thing. These things, they're not going to be worth a whole lot of money. There's new technology and stuff like that that comes out in these every year, just like digital phones. So I don't think that's a concern, but working out who owns them, I think that's a conversation we can have, and honestly, I'm not so sure I really care.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
This is, if there's other things that come up, I'm happy to come back in, or emails or telephone calls, whatever works for you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ken.
Oh, I appreciate it. No, not, I actually would, just wanted to speak to the committee. Thank you. By bringing this here, I, this is kind of the second time we've talked about this, and it also sounds like a lot of the administration, various parts of it, has kind of gone through at least some introductory look at AdSposure and these signs in particular. Are we, as a committee, just trying to give a blessing? Are we trying to, or put in legislation that allows them to exist?
That's a good question. As far as I would, as far as I can foresee, I think it just really comes down to us, we're just kind of giving a blessing to the administration, and this would be pretty much the Safety Service Director that would enter into a contract. That would be a question for the Law Department to see if we need to have an ordinance that, you know, you know, grants permission to enter into a contract, and that would just be a question for the Law Department.
Some of the conversation that did go on led me to believe that there's no ordinance or any problem with doing this. This was more of a blessing to make sure that you guys wanted to do it.
Yeah, that's what it-
I was just checking. Thank you, Gabby.
Mr. Dracy, you had a question?
I think it's more for, I guess, Gabby at this point. Have we really looked into the sign ordinance as far as what these are capable of doing within that ordinance? Are we going to have to adjust that ordinance, create a whole new ordinance just for these? Are we gonna, you know, because if we go and adjust an ordinance, we're going to be adjusting it for everybody. That means we're going to have to allow businesses to have certain signs that meet this criteria. We're going to have to have, you know, again, I'm looking at fair across the board, not just, "Hey, because we're going to make money off these signs, we're going to allow them, but you as, and as can't have it." You know what I mean?
That's, I mean, that's going to be a question for not only the Law Department, but the Building Department as we, you know, move forward, to see if we do need to make any type tweaks to any ordinances or codes for that. But these are all on like right-of-ways. They're not on anybody's property. They're on a city right-of-way, so it's, you know, city property, more or less, that they would be installed on. So I'm not sure that we would have to tweak because of that, but that's a good question to ask, though.
Anything else, gentlemen? Mr. Dracy?
Yes, I've got another one.
Mr. Black?
Have you guys done any sort of data capture for traffic flow or distractions, distracted drivers may be looking at these things while they're driving down the street, how many accidents occur around them due to distractions? I mean, you know, as police officers are out there, they can, they can cite a driver for looking at their phone. They can cite a driver for being distracted by their phone that caused an accident. Are these things that your company has looked at or other companies that do this have looked at to see if these are distracting to drivers, especially with us having these looking like they're on the major thoroughfares?
Yeah. I don't have any particular stats or any studies that we've done. I can tell you that city after city, these smart kiosks are popping up all over the place. So it's becoming a very popular trend with many larger cities, more so than, you know, Cincinnati or Norwood size. But I don't think they would be doing it if there was hardship on, from that perspective. When we were talking to the people in downtown Cincinnati before the streetcar part of this blew up, that was a concern. We were talking about like, where to position these, "Hey, there's a, there's a light here." And, you know, we don't want to create any distracting visible signs where someone runs a light because they, they're glancing at this. So I think those are things that, you know, as we work through locations, we go, "You know what? This, both of these can work, but this one just feels like it's going to be a better place because of, you know, traffic concerns, accident concerns." And we go in that direction. But I don't think, and I have not read a single thing, to suggest that there's overwhelming evidence in any way that these are distraction or an accident.
But there's no evidence there that doesn't say that either.
Well, I think you wouldn't be seeing more and more of these sold if, you know, the same municipalities. I mean, you know, that's going to be a common question, I think, asked by anyone, particularly in safety and committees inside of an administration. Yeah, so, yeah, I think it's a legit question, but I don't, I can't, I can't tell you I've got a definitive study that says one way or another.
Right. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you very much. My question is about vandalism. How often are these things like vandalized, or, you know, somebody takes a baseball bat to them or something like that, or even, let's just say even, does a car hit them or a vehicle hit them? And then when that happens, who pays for the damage?
Yeah, so we'll maintain insurance on them. Vandalism such as spray paint may occur. Obviously, depending upon the locations we put these, I think it's less likely just because they're going to be in high-traffic areas. So I think even overnight period, I doubt we get a whole lot of it. If someone wants to take a baseball bat at it, they're probably going to need to buy a new baseball bat. When they first got these things delivered, before I actually wrote the check for them, I made them show me the claim that they said about the glasses on this. They took a 20-foot tape measure, and the closest thing I could find was some weight, and I said, "All right, chuck it at it." And he was a little nervous, to be honest with you, when he did it, but he threw it, the thing bounced off, and the tape measure broke, but the screen was just fine.
Thank you.
More tape measure.
And go to Home Depot.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we're talking a 10-year agreement with the city, start seeing revenue after three years.
Yes, sir.
Just in case, like, say, within that three years, we start seeing revenue, what if it's just like something that just doesn't work? People aren't buying the ads? Is there any like clause in there to where we get something out of that, or is it just you guys would come and move when we go, and they would agree it would be over, or how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we could work something out in the language of the contract that could speak to this. I mean, we've put in $42,500 minimum, so if for some reason it, that we couldn't sell anything, there's $42,000 coming to you guys for these things, and you guys have a tool for some PSAs. Legitimately, I don't think there's a chance that that happens. I think these will be, particularly at the locations we've talked about putting them, these go right along with the sales staff that we've already got here in Cincinnati that's selling the streetcar, tank bus advertising, benches and shelters and buses in Cincinnati on Sorda properties. I think advertisers have gobbled this up in a hurry. I don't think that's a question. Now, do we get to 65% sellout versus 60? Do I get a $600 rate versus 650 or 550? Those are for real. I can't tell you exactly where those rates are going to come in. Those are, those are approximations, but I don't think there's any chance that these aren't sold in a very big way.
Awesome.
Mr. Dracy?
So if Norwood put a PSA up on just one of these signs, we would still be responsible for the $600 as well?
No, sir. No, we're working partnership on that. 65%, for example, we use that in our sellouts of any pro forma that we go into a new market with. There's going to be times where we'll be at 90% sellout. There'll be times we'll be at 50. When we have inventory that's available for sale, I think we should have additional advertisements, PSAs that are available for Norwood to backfill in to get your messaging across when there's no advertiser to run. So no, and you, and you won't pay for them at all.
Mr. Kels?
It might be in here. I'm trying to look through the locations now, but would it be possible for us to maybe get one of these outside of City Hall if it's not already on the list that we could use just for that?
I think the whole location thing, I put a bunch of them there that we've talked about. I think that is a fresh conversation that can be had, and we're willing to look at any place that's got enough eyeballs to create the revenue that creates the math that we need to do what we've said we can do. I'm not sold on any particular location. It's all about eyeballs and traffic count. That's, that's what the advertisers are going to want.
Anyone else? Mr. Bonzel, you have any? Anyone else? Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it.
The administration came to me about, you know, they wanted to do this. So my recommendation would be that as we report this out, that we, we forward this information to the administration, the Safety Service Director, and tell him to look into it and consider it and see if it's something that will work for us.
Will do.
Great.
Thank you, gentlemen. Nothing further. We'll move on to item two. Mr. Gabbard?
Next, we have Tri-State Trails. Tonight, we have with us Wade Johnston and Rachel Cully that are from Tri-State Trails to kind of discuss some trail ideas, proposals, whatever else they might have up their sleeve. Go ahead, Wade.
Thank you. So thanks for an opportunity to meet with you all. My name's Wade Johnston. I'm the Director of Tri-State Trails at Green Umbrella. I'm joined by my colleague, Rachel Cutley, who is our Trail and Bike Weight Coordinator. I'm joined by my colleague Rachel Cutley, who is our Trail and Bike Way Coordinator. Green Umbrella is a nonprofit organization, we serve the 10 county area in greater Cincinnati. We are focused on environmental sustainability. Program that I lead, Tri-State Trails, is specifically focused on connecting and expanding the trail and bikeway network here in greater Cincinnati. So just quick show of hands, how, how many of you all are familiar with the Wasson Way Trail? Everybody, great, okay. So we've seen a lot of excitement about Wasson Way in Norwood from Norwood residents. So I have three things I want to accomplish today, I wanted to just give you a little update on that and the bigger vision for that. I also wanted to plant a seed and get you all thinking about some connections into your community to the Wasson Way Trail, and then also present an opportunity to partner on getting some more, some bike racks in Norwood to make Norwood more bike friendly. So if you look at this first map that has a kind of a light gray background with Crown on it, just wanted to give you all an overview and update on where things stand. So Wasson Way is a part of a bigger vision that we're working on called the Crown, the Cincinnati Riding or Walking Network. And last year, we helped the city of Cincinnati secure a $6 million grant to build out the majority of Wasson Way. So the little piece that already exists about a mile and a half from Montgomery Road to Madison Road, the city of Cincinnati is working right now to extend that east to Marburg Avenue, that should be finished by the end of the year. We also have funding to connect that through Alt Park and link up to what's called the Murray Path down in Fairfax where that number three is on the map. And then we also have some additional funding through that same grant to extend west, starting at Woodburn Avenue near Xavier University and heading east, west towards Blair Avenue in Avondale. And we applied for another grant this year with the city to extend that further west to link up to the intersection of Martin Luther King and Reading. We'll find out on Thursday if that is awarded, it was recommended to be funded, so it's pretty likely it's going to be awarded. And our goal here is that we want to connect Wasson Way, Xavier University to UC, the Uptown area, so that biking can be, biking and walking for that matter, can be more than just a recreational activity, but can be a form of transportation and be an opportunity for people to live an active lifestyle around this area. So Gabby reached out to us and was, the conversation started around the US Plane Card Site and exploring a trail connection from Shea Stadium to, through the Public Works Department and ultimately connected up to the Bicycle Plane Card Site. If you look at the second map where it says Norwood Connector Concept on it, Rachel and I met Gabby and a resident out at the site and walked some areas, and we think that it's pretty feasible to start thinking about a trail connection in that vicinity. And I'll kind of jump around here, but we have a partner who has committed to donating bike racks to a number of communities in Cincinnati and Northern Kentucky. It's called the Dubuque Good Foundation. They donated 500 bike racks to Covington, about 100 bike racks to Newport, and they just donated 1,000 bike racks to Cincinnati. And they had some extra left over from one of the projects, and they said, hey, we realized that Norwood was left out of this, would Norwood be interested in this? So Rachel and I went out to go for a little bike audit to see where bike racks were existing and where there might be an opportunity to put some. And then we parked at Rookwood and we rode off the Wasson Way and we were exploring a little bit. And on our way back, we came back on Floral Avenue and realized how much width is there and looked at some right of way lines and learned that there used to be a streetcar route that went through there. And so we started brainstorming that, you know, this could be a really cool opportunity to extend the Wasson Way experience directly into the heart of Norwood. So I wanted to just get you all thinking about that. We put some lines on the map here of potential opportunities, and just so we're all on the same page, when we're talking about a trail, in a best case scenario, you know, we're talking about like what Wasson Way looks like, typically around 10 to 12 to 14 foot wide, plenty of room for people to walk and bike and avoid conflicts with people going too fast. But, you know, there's other opportunities that you, facility types that you can use that can accomplish that same type of connectivity. Trails end up being a little more expensive most of the time because you're, you know, essentially paving a new road and utilize your existing space in the road to create what we call a protected bike lane, which would be similar to Central Parkway downtown, but we would like to enhance that and make that a little more protected from traffic so it feels safer for people to use. And when we are working on projects, we are often advocating for facilities that are physically separated from traffic so that folks don't have to interact with cars, they feel safe using it, and when, when we have those types of design implemented, then people will likely use it for their everyday lifestyle. So then the last thing that I'll let Rachel talk about is just this opportunity for more bike racks in Norwood.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Rachel Cully, I'm the Trail and Bike Way Coordinator for Tri-State Trails. And as Wade said, we are partners with someone who is willing to donate a series of bike racks to the Norwood community. And Wade and I had the opportunity to essentially do a bike parking audit of the community. So we rode around the community, starting in Rookwood, as he said, looking at bike racks that are already existing in the community, ones that we feel as though could be replaced, and places that we see an opportunity for them to be installed as well. So when we're talking about bike racks, we have about 20 to 25 to donate to the community. They're going to be a staple style bike rack, so they hold about up to two bikes, two bikes at a time. And places that we're looking for these to go are just community centers, the YMCA, the Health Department, schools, middle schools, high schools, restaurants, bars, just community destinations in general. So if people feel as though they want to bike to a destination in the community, they can do so. So biking around the community, a lot of the places we saw are the ones that I just mentioned, there's some existing bike racks near schools already, but we feel as though when we're talking about like a sufficient bike rack, we want one that's kind of bolted into the ground, so not something that can necessarily move around. So we're willing to offer new opportunities for bike racks in certain areas. And the ones that are listed here, as you can see in the green, it says we want to install a new bike rack. The red dots are to replace an existing bike rack, and then the, the blue dots are ones where we feel as though they're sufficient enough right now and are fine. But we're obviously open to discussing other places that you guys see as community destinations or places where you think that having a bike rack would be feasible, so, yeah.
Yeah, so we're happy to answer any questions you might have, talk more about trails and bike racks. And I think we're looking for direction from you all, like if we were to make this donation to the city, typically we would like to, to have your Public Works or Public Services Department install them, so that's not an additional cost that we would bear. Typically, you would want to install those in the right of way, so we could talk, I mean, there's a lot of logistics that we could talk through, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Dracy?
All right. Let the, let the make fun of map begin here. And here's why, because, you know, I'm looking at this map and once again, I see one area of Norwood getting more items and more, more exposure. You know, I don't, I don't see West Norwood, I don't see North Norwood. I, you know, I understand that the Wasson Way was connected to this and that the Plane Card Company was connected to this. I'm trying to figure out, you know, was there a reason other than Wasson Way that this trail concept was, was proposed?
Was that?
I'm happy to answer that question.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Wade.
Well, this is not an exhaustive list by any means, I mean, this is like a starting point where we were riding around and saw, hey, this is like really feasible. I mean, some of the challenges to building a trail are acquiring the land, finding the money to build it and having the public support. And so we're here on the public support issue to see like, is this something that you all would like to explore further? I mean, that's something that we could talk about, looking at other parts of the community, for sure. This is like, again, not by no means an exhaustive list of places where this could go. But, you know, if you don't have the land assembled to put a trail in, it is often a long, a time consuming process to acquire that land and often expensive. So, you know, that's something that we could look into, but we saw this prime opportunity and we just wanted to share it with you all so it was on your radar.
I saw everybody's hand up, I think. Who, did you have your, Mr. Braden?
I just, I do, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. So I just, I appreciate the work that was involved in this. I, you know, I appreciate, you know, worried about East Norwood here, but you got to realize that they're connected Wasson Way, it's already, it's already developed, you know, Rookwood, Went Down Park and Forest and Floral, those, those streets have the room. I just, I, I can't rack my mind thinking where we would do this over on the east side, so I appreciate, you know, I appreciate the work involved, I just don't, you know, we're so congested over on this side, so I mean, I appreciate you worried about east, east side Norwood, but I just, you know, I don't think that's a, you got to, you got to have the real estate, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Braden. Mr. Kelch, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. I just want to clarify to Mr. Dracy that just on this, the line, we'll bring 10 new, could be nine, 10 new bike parking stations to West Norwood. I'm definitely for that. I was just doing the math here, drew it out, I do like that idea. I would also like to add that we are doing, one of the parks we're renovating, one of the pieces I bought by the stadium is going to be like a bike repair station where you can see your bike on repair, fill the tires up and stuff like that. Not exactly as close enough to Wasson Way, but it's still kind of right there in the middle of Norwood that people can use that, so I love this idea, and I didn't even, I'm going to have to drive by these locations just to see where these bike racks would go, but I'm excited about that, that we get that many here in West Norwood, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you very much. To me, I kind of see this just as an open, you know, an open plan, so, you know, I do think that council members, if we do have, you know, if there's concerns or if there's like other things that we want to see or we want to conceptualize or visualize, I think it's, the way I interpret this, that this is a very open dialogue that really you're just trying to broaden our horizon to what possibly could be. So I appreciate that, and of course, you know, having a bike trail on Floral Avenue the way that it's kind of, you know, just the dotted line is there, there's no, there's no designs, but it would be a major undertaking, so, you know, this, I think right now it's literally a very open, early discussion. I will say on the bike rack though, I would definitely encourage every council member to kind of think about these bike rack locations. I mean, there very well could be places that, you know, we know a lot, we know about the neighborhoods just because we live in the neighborhoods, right? And not everybody that's not, doesn't live in Norwood is going to kind of realize maybe some of these places. So there could be additional places, or there could be places that maybe it doesn't work and we want to move it to somewhere else, but I would just encourage all council members to think about that, about, you know, where are we missing a bike rack that potentially could be, you know, value add because, yeah, I think there's definitely options on here, and so hopefully we can partner together to find this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Gabbard?
Couple of things, I agree with Mr. Bonzel, as, as we look at this, I would, I would almost start with our parks, making sure that we get a bike rack kind of at each park location, and then, you know, some of these public sites, you know, the community center in front of the Health Department that, by the school, and the schools. So once you've got the parks and the schools, that's going to take up a lot of those just right there. So that would be a good starting point. As far as, just to address Mr. Dracy's concern, one of the first things that Wade will tell you is that with the Wasson Way, when I was on council before, many years ago, I was with Donna Lake when we were trying to get the railroad that goes down by Upper Millcrest and get that turned, you know, we wanted to do that, and the past administration was absolutely adamant against that, no, and it just got shut down. And so I told him, that's a great way to bring it into West Norwood, so then from there we could branch up further into the streets, up towards the school, those kind of things. So, yeah, that, you know, but that's a very valid point is that we want to make sure that we incorporate, if at all possible, different routes, whether they're designated paths that are, are barricaded off, or if they're just maybe marked areas, you know, to show certain paths or loops, because that, you know, talking with Wade early on, we, you know, it would be good to have just different loops that, you know, if, if you branch off of this one, you can start on to this loop and different things, but, you know, I, I definitely think that we need to look at, this is just a starting point because the Wasson Way is already established to draw that down into Norwood, but, you know, we would want to have offshoots to be able to hit all of our different neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Mr. Dracy?
I was tired of my questions yet.
You're good.
So you discussed protected trails or protected bike ways. I'm assuming you're meeting something like a barrier that you would see on the highway when they do temporary construct, or temporary barriers with construction, the, the concrete barrier type deal. Whose investment would that be? Would that be the city? And if it's the city, then we've got to look at our street funds and go, okay, do we put up a barrier for this trail, or do we, or do we repave the road?
If I could respond to that, you know, I think the biggest opportunity to get bike infrastructure affordably is to do it when you're already repaving the road. So if you're getting ready, if you've got a street that's going to have regularly scheduled maintenance, the cost of bike infrastructure is really just the paint and whatever protection you might be adding or signage in addition to that. You know, doing it as a standalone project, you're right, you know, it makes it more costly to do that just for bikes, but, you know, we often advocate for communities to do it in their regularly scheduled road maintenance, so it's kind of doing two things at once, especially if you're looking at roads that are wider than they need to be for the vehicle counts that are on them. You know, if you can create some space for bicycling in those, those wide roads, not only does it create space for bikes, but it can have other benefits like traffic calming to slow cars down from speeding through your community and, you know, making it feel unsafe for pedestrians as well.
Mr. Dracy?
You just brought up another question that I hadn't thought of, and I, and I know we do have some wider roads here. However, I wonder if we put in a bike path, like let's say the city of Cincinnati has on Montgomery Road, how that would affect our parking issue, because a lot of houses either one, don't have the driveway big enough to accommodate a car or, or a modern sized car, I guess, or don't have driveways at all, so, you know, or we have a lot of multifamily properties that have multiple cars that need to park on that street. So where does, where does the parking come in as far as, you know, would we be losing that parking?
Yeah, you know, it's a case by case basis. We would want to look at it and have that discussion. Parking is one of the concerns we often hear about. The lines that we put on this map, you know, these were areas where we thought that it would make sense without having those side effects. And the other thing I'll say is that, you know, just because of the nature of Norwood, you know, you've got a lot of dense housing in here, there's a lot of potential for Norwood to transform into a walkable, bikeable community where people choose to live here and not necessarily need a car. So I know that might be, you know, a couple steps ahead in the thinking, but having an investment in infrastructure like this can create that kind of benefit.
Mr. Gabbard?
Actually, a couple of residents did do some measurements on Floral Avenue, and it would accommodate a bike lane, parking, and the traffic still both ways, because Forest and, and Floral both are extremely wide roads, so it, you know, like those particular streets, they, they actually could be accommodated. And the idea that they came up with, which I like, was you had the traffic obviously in the middle and then parking, and then the bike is next to the curb, which allows the parked cars to kind of be the barrier to keep, you know, and make it a little bit more safer or more, you feel a little bit more secure if you're a parent, your, your kid's riding in that lane because there's parked cars that kind of are, is that buffer, which works out really well.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think there's, yeah, I mean, there's multiple ways to go about it, as, you know, Mr. Dracy's questions are kind of alluding to that, there's a lot of stuff there. I think the important thing for us today, and Mr. Gabbard, because I do want to make sure that we get to our next guests that are here, you know, at the appropriate time, but I think the important thing for us today is like, do we support kind of this vision of like trying to look at more walk, or more bikeability for Norwood? And do we support the, the vision of kind of, do we support the actual implementation, it sounds like, of trying to install more bicycle racks? And, you know, I definitely support that vision, and then I also support the more practical thing that we have right here, the bicycle racks, and definitely anything that I can do to help Mr. Gabbard or what have you, I definitely want to help with that.
Mr. Gabbard?
Just for Rachel, I know Rachel sent me a message asking about the back rates, bike rates, bike racks, easy for me to say. I did speak with Clint Zimmerman just this morning, and he said they were more than willing to help out the, as far as installation, that would, that would, that okay would have to come from our Safety Service Director to say that. He would just, and I will get you his email so you could send him He would just, and I will get you his email so you could send him specs, how they need to be mounted, all those kind of particulars, so he'd have a better idea to, when he does talk with the administration to get the okay. But, you know, to get 20 to 25 free bike racks like that and, you know, the only cost to us is our public works installing them, that's a pretty good deal again.
Thank you. Mr. Tracy.
Essentially what you're trying to basically do is just give us the bike racks.
Yes, that was our ultimate goal for today is to give you these, but also to get you thinking about connections for the trail.
Because I think the biggest thing that when I go into something like this is what is the city's investment into this? How much are we putting into it and is it, is it something that is actually going to be worthwhile when we put that money in there, especially where we're at right now as a city, trying to save as much as we can because we don't want to go back to two, three, four, five, six, seven years ago where we were basically scraping the bottom of the barrel. I, you know, I don't, I don't want to see us spending money on things that really aren't essential to... How do I, I'm trying to think of a good word here. Essential to the city. I'm not saying it's not essential to the city doing this, but I also don't want to go out and spend $800,000 on putting a trail out there if we don't have to.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I think Mr. Tracy's concerns are very valid and appreciate him bringing those. The cool thing is that like if we have a plan, so right now, I mean, there's not really a plan when it comes to the bike thing. It's just he's presenting a vision of what could be, but there's no plan. But if we have a plan, then we could actually look in, there's like, through OKI, they've got transportation alternative type grants, there's all kinds of stuff that we could look at in order to, you know, just help fund part of this if we, if we're able to do it. But I think those discussions are definitely for, it's hard to have them now because we don't even know what we would want to do. Would we want to put the protected bike lanes in on Floral or Forest or would we want to go on the right of way, right, on the tree lawn and put an actual trail in? I mean, there's so much discussion about what could be, what do the residents there want? But I do think this is very much worthy of additional discussion and I think the committee holds a great place for this. So, I'm definitely looking forward to those future conversations just to see what, what could be.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Thompson.
Thanks again for coming. I love the idea of adding more bike racks to the city. I also really appreciate you bringing up the fact that Norwood is a walkable and a bikeable city and we should be thinking of it as such and doing things that help actually enhance that. It was built as a walkable city when the streets were first laid out. That's why we have little markets all over the town and that's why things are just, so we've got little pocket parks everywhere. Everything is made for residents to be able to walk or bike easily to different parts of the city and the parts that we want. So, it's just, I appreciate you recognizing that. I think this could be a part of that, but it would, it would, it would serve us well to think about this, about our city just in general in a lot of different ways as we consider, or as we continue to move our city into the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
I just want to say one more thing. For the Wason Way, the little piece that there's, that's there now, one and a half miles, we did a trial count on it this summer and on average for the peak time of the summer when we counted, there's over 1,000 people a day using the trail. And having that humidity connected into your residential area has proven benefits to improve property values, to attract economic development. I mean, it could, think about the trail as a tool that you can use to continue to revitalize Norwood.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Tracy.
I think that that's a good point that he brought up, especially since the last meeting we had, somebody come out and speak and I kind of got yelled at on Facebook for not caring about the, the housing prices exploding and the rental prices exploding. But, you know, a lot of these things that we're doing right now, you know, we are increasing the value of these homes and value of the rental properties in Norwood and we make it, you know, I'm not saying we can't make it walkable, can't make it bikeable, but it's that economic impact where, you know, we as council members have to look at and say, how do we put out the fires when we get these residents that come in saying they can't afford to certain places that they could have afforded five years ago? You know, and I get it, it's a balancing act. I'm just, I'm kind of speaking my mind right now. I'm not, I'm not saying this is good, I'm not saying this is bad. I just, we have to look at that and everything that we seem to bring up ends up one way or the other, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Thank you, Wade and Rachel. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Wade.
Moving on, item three. Mr. Gabbard.
Tonight, we have invited Pastor Sonny James to come. He has on numerous occasions brought up his 13-point plan that he would like to have the opportunity to talk with us about and so we felt it would be a good idea to put it in the committee of hold so you would have, you know, some time. Tonight will only be the start of this. This is obviously not something that's going to be just taken care of tonight. This is probably going to be a multi-meeting discussion, but it's a discussion that needs to take place. It's a discussion that's probably many, 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 many years behind where we should have already taken this, these discussions. So, with that, Pastor James?
Thank you. Let me just start off by saying, in all of our lifetimes, there are certain memorable moments that occur and all of us have different memories that have really shaped who we've become today. And so, let me start off by saying how truly honored, when I say honored, I mean truly honored, because as all of us sit here today or stand, the reality is this is nothing shy of history in the making. As we look around the country and we see how different communities are really being challenged, not just in an economic impact, but social unrest. I recently met with some of our councilmen and before we got started in a meeting, I sent them a video and I asked them to tell me what is it that they saw in this video. And before they responded, I said to them, let me tell you all right now. You will see this video and I know you will do the very best you can to describe what you're looking at, but let me tell you right away, all of you will be wrong. You will see what you see and what you see is actually what you see, but I challenge you to think deeper because what you see is not really what's going on, not just from our joint perspective, but from the perspective of many, many people and one after another. They looked at the video and they did a valid job and I applaud them and I don't say that facetiously. They really did an awesome job trying to share what it is they saw, but they were incorrect. You see, a lot of times when we face injustices, when we face a wrong, when we face a problem, the first problem is that we're looking at what we see. The late, great Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "I have a dream and I can just kind of imagine for a second that he actually laid his head down at night and God may have spoken or shown a vision, but he had a vision that children, adults, that think different, look different, act different, talk different, could join together and walk hand in hand, one to another, and actually not have a perfect dynamic, but sit together and actually work it out." The reason this is history in the making is because I, like many of you around the tables right now, we've had challenges after challenges, week after week. Some of us have been bold enough to come together and say, like Mr. Brayden and I, and although we don't see eye to eye in times, what we try to do is actually hear it from the other person's perspective. And tonight, what I want to challenge us to do is we go through these 13 points and as Councilman Gabbard said, and I want to say this to all of those that are listening and expecting a certain thing out of me, I'm going to agree with Councilman Gabbard. We're not going to be able to bite it all off in one nibble. I know that many of you expect this to answer all of our problems. Well, let me put it on my back and say it is not, but let me promise each and every one of you that with every ounce of breath left in my body, I don't desire to come together just so that we can talk. I desire that we come together, that we can actually make resolutions that actually help shape the overall confidence in the children that precede us. I want to make a difference and I believe the fact that this is on the agenda today and I want all my peers, and I'm asking you, I'm begging you, just like Holly Johnson and Father Win of Xavier, recently met this black man and his wife, not having any understanding of who we are, maybe separate things could keep us divided, but then coming together to say, excuse me, how can we make it better for our future? And that means, ladies and gentlemen, the children that come behind us. So, as we get into this 13-point plan, to be honest with you, I originally planned to come in, show a video that I had shown some of the others, but after giving some other thought to it, I said, I'm not going to do that. In order for us to move forward, we're gonna have to get to a point where we can address the past. And I know that's very difficult because the past hurts, especially in Norwood. The past does hurt, but I want to applaud each and every one of you who are sitting in those seats tonight because you didn't have to be sitting here. You did not have to show up. You saw my name on the agenda and as Gabby will probably say, calm down, soldier, relax, because you have seen me so angry. I know some of you have thought, well, my God, Pastor James just might throw this building on top of me right now. He is so angry and the reality is, folks, I am. But if we take a look at what's right in front of us, I know those that are watching cannot see this, which that's fine because we're gonna take some time and go over this. It's so important that we start looking for the things that we don't see. And when you talk about racial reconciliation, when you talk about systemic racism, folks, these, these are not just terms that, that people around us pull out of their hat. These are not terms that people just throw out because they have nothing better to do in their lives. They throw those terms out because they have become reality for not only them, but people they care about. Back in December of 2015, many of you may or may not know, I was the, one of the lead individuals responsible for bringing in the Department of Justice right here to Norwood. And we were supposed to address the real issues that have divided people and literally right in my face, 10 minutes before the DOJ was to help us address our real issues, all of my community leaders got together and made up a new plan that, hey, we're not gonna talk about anything bad. We want to focus on the nice things in Norwood. And I felt ambushed because until we look at the past, from where we've come, how do we think we can move forward as one people? And because of time, number one, I'm so grateful for the floor and the opportunity to just share my heart, because many of you know, I don't just speak for myself. Any African-American person watching or even here with us now, if they were given the mic, they would say some of the same things. So, when I speak, my voice is going for those who oftentimes don't feel like they can fight for themselves or speak for themselves. So, part of my 13-point plan, after the DOJ left, I was so disheartened, but I didn't want to give up. And so, I put together a 13-point plan to help us as a people to rectify ourselves as one of our former mayors said, "The ghosts that plague are present." And folks, I believe that if we work together on this wonderful day, I believe the future of our children tomorrow will make for a better, a safer environment, a healthier lifestyle. And the reality is, I want to see a lot of black boys and black girls filling many of these same seats. I want to see them courageous enough to have an opportunity to go to a board meeting and understand that they're actually on the roll or they're a part of it. I want to help young people realize the realities that a lot of others that came before us had, but we have one problem and that is when we have leadership or administration that won't even come to the table to say, hey, what is it that you're really talking about? Pastor James, why is it that you come in here and you're just mad as dog grass? Why is it that you're just grunting and growling? But I thank God for Councilman Kelch because I remember a day outside of council chambers, he even had to play mediator and you know what he did? He made me realize, rise above what's right in front of you. And guess what? Is right. And that's what I need to do and that's what we need to do. And that's what I need to do, and that's what we need to do. So I know you guys are going to have some questions about some of these things, and because of time, I want to get right into them. The first thing on the list is inclusion amongst leadership. I know you all have read that many times over, but much like I challenged those three gentlemen when we met, I can almost assure you, no matter how many times you read it over, you have no clue of what I'm really talking about. So let me just share a little bit. What I'm talking about is, when we have a Caucasian child that does something great in our community, that's a wonderful thing to acknowledge. But when we acknowledge those things, yet we don't acknowledge the wonderful African-Americans that are doing awesome things, how about paying their taxes? How about teaching their children not to ramsack the community when they watch some of those horrific videos that some of you have recently watched? People are angry. We've got to do a better job of bringing leadership to the table. That if you don't agree with me, like Councilman Gabbard, we met at Chipotle, everyone knows that's one, one of my favorites. And by the end of that meeting, I can't say we both were, but I knew I was in tears because I began to see what Dr. King was talking about. I began to see the possibilities, and so I didn't give up on this day happening. But when we leave here today, my prayer is that all of you also will have a dream, that you can go to your peers and say to them, hey, what you did was wrong. How you approached that was not fair. Because I can guarantee you, every black person watching this today, I can't tell you how many times I was called even today to say, ah, go lightly. You know they're playing. You know they're not going to do anything. You know this is just a process to get you to shut up. But I don't believe that's the case. I believe we're really here, guys, because you understand the importance of recognizing the fact that how can we push towards economic inclusion, which is very, very important. If you have an issue, and yet the only thing the mayor might recognize is, oh, I see you cut your hair. Well, that's nice, sir, but you don't, you don't, you don't see the other things we're doing? I mean, with Xavier University to just recently be given a $500 grant to focus specifically on teaching some of our young leaders at Xavier University, how they can be empowered to make an impact and a difference as they become educators in their life. Inclusion amongst leadership is so important because if people can't see people who look like them, they don't believe they can ever be like you. They don't think they stand a chance. So the only thing they go to is what's easy. It's easy to pick up a brick and smash a window. It's easy to watch a video of a black man being held down by several police officers, being punched in the face while he's handcuffed, being beat at his legs while he says, ouch! Watching the police officers say, put your legs down, as they continue to beat him. Who in their right mind could put their legs down while they're being beat? So you know what you see there? You see a mentality. You see status quo. You see a mindset that says, there's no accountability, there's no consequences for what I do. And in the one video, officer after officer came to assist. Why didn't one of them just stand up and say, not on my watch, shortcake? It ain't happening here. And that's what's happening in our communities. That's what's happening in our boardrooms. We're not getting beat by sticks. But what we're being, what's happening is, we're not being invited to the table where decisions are actually being made. And that's why I applaud Mr. Braden. At first, Mr. Braden came to one of our community events, hearing every perspective. And at the end, he was given the mic. He said publicly, he said, Pastor James, I know you're always complaining, but my God, I grew up here, I've lived here all my life, I just don't see any racism. Now, at first, I wanted to grab the nearest chair. However, however, the more I started thinking about him, thinking about his character, thinking about his wife, I thought, that's not what he's saying. And I thought, wow, I would love to be John Braden. Whereas, how nice would it be if you could wake up knowing your children are going to be able to say, I don't see racism. I have an opportunity just like everyone else. I can be the mayor if I want to. I can be the president of the United States of America. And I have mentors and peers, they may not look like me, they may not think like me, but they're here to embrace me, and I feel good about being me. I want to challenge you here. This is going to be a long process, but I'm asking you to partner with me. And once a quarter, come together with specific intention to address things that relate to our diversity, things that help bring us together, and require that your peers show up. Require that they also see that it's important that they come to the table. It's nice for our police department to say, we need funding for this and that, and I agree. Most of you know, wherever he sits, my 19-year-old son wants to be the first African-American officer with tenure in this community. I want him to have every opportunity possible. But in order to do so, we've got to bring some inclusion amongst leadership. And what that means is, coming to the table. Because after this, I'm going to be barking and barking and barking and barking for economic inclusion. When you eat, I want to eat. When you shop, I want to shop. And when you get a grant, I'm so grateful and honored to participate in that grant with you. And thank you. We've got to look at things different to approach them different. The last thing for today, and what I'm really excited to ask your partnership in, remember the first thing, quarterly meetings with leadership focusing on diversity. And part of that will be talking about economic inclusion, talking about how do we get grants? How do we get loans? How do we get the training that we need? We have jobs right here in Norwood. I'm so grateful now because I'm starting to get those links. And thank you, guys, for sending me those links so that we can get the word out to blacks, African-Americans, and say, hey, there are jobs available right here in Norwood. Or like Ms. Orso, who works with St. Aloysius, and they're looking to hire people, that we can partner with African-Americans that are saying, hey, we can bring awesome people to the table. If you look in our city right now, though, you'll see a common thread. You don't believe me? Challenge me and go look. I don't mind if your family members get a job, but when they get all the jobs and mine don't, that's, that hurts us. The second thing, put it on your calendars, Friday, January the 15th, most of you know that's right around Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. I want us to have a march of unity from Xavier campus to the doorsteps of our city hall. And in front of us won't be the dignitaries, it'll be a world of children. Because what we do should be done to advance them. And for the record, I've never come to this council asking for money for me, I don't need your money. In fact, years ago, my wife and I was promoting pro boxing shows, and I offered to bring money to the city. But again, because it was me who made the offer, they didn't do it. Yet in this same building, just feet away, the weekend after that, I saw the staff in there having candle sales. They were selling candles to raise money. You didn't even want $30,000 from Pastor James, you didn't even want it. One council member came to me and said, well, you know, you're going to have to have insurance, you're going to have to have this, you're going to have to have that. Guys, I know we're coming to an end. But it's time that we stop looking for obstacles and start looking for solutions that people can see your heart. Mr. Braden, thank you for your heart, sir. Mr. Thompson, you came to hearing every perspective when some happened. Thank you, sir. Mr. Donardo, my prayer is that you will be with me for many, many years to come, that we can impose the change that will reshape our community. Mr. Kelch, as many have thought that I would be running for council here, you're very safe in my ward. I have no interest because if I were to run for office, it would be for mayor and nothing less. So I want to support you in what you do. Mr. Racey, my brother, God bless you, and we'll always continue to work. Gabby, all I can say is let's praise someone. Mr. Bonzel, you know, I thought when I addressed you, I really utilized the stage for a purpose. I don't want to do that. What I want to do with you right now, Mr. Bonzel, in front of everyone, I want to rise above even myself, and I want to apologize to you for things that I've been so angry. But if I'm going to challenge somebody else, where should the challenge start? Right here. Let's bury the hatchet. I'm all in. Only thing I say is, when you come to talk to me, just come real, and I'll be right there with you. Mr. Miracle, thank you, sir, for this privilege and opportunity, and I can honestly say, I'm looking forward to coming together more and more. And then on January the 15th, I'm praying that every resident in every community group out here bring a thousand people, and let's march together to show that we're but one people for a common goal, and that's to make the lives of the children better. God bless you all. God bless our city of Norwood. I thank you for your time today. And when you go home today, give somebody a high five. And if you're married, say, baby, we just participated in history. Because Norwood will never be the same if you will partner with me and trust that this was a point in time in history. God bless you, guys.
Thank you, Pastor James. Gentlemen, that concludes all three items. I think we're at 7:29, we've got the finance committee at 7:30, so we'll go ahead and right there. So that concludes our meeting. Thank you.